...issued by the Regional Water Quality Board. The claim numbers are printed on the closed session agenda and I shall not read them out loud. The second item is an exposure, also an exposure to litigation, but this time it's pursuant to Government Code Section 5495-6.9 D2 or D3 and E1 because there's an exposure to litigation where the facts and circumstances giving rise to such exposure may not be known to the putative plaintiff. The next item is a closed session briefing of the City Council pursuant to Government Code Section 5495-6.9 D1 regarding pending litigation to which the city is a party. The title of the litigation is Verde's Estates versus the City of Rancho Palos Verde's, Los Angeles Superior Court, case number 25STCV14553. Mr. Mayor Protem, with your permission, we'd like to continue closed session agenda item number four to the next council meeting. We're not prepared to brief you on labor negotiations just yet. And the final closed session is Government Code, pursuant to Government Code Section 5495-6.9 E because the city is considering whether to initiate litigation in two cases. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem.
Thank you very much, Mr. City Attorney. We will now recess to the fire service room. Thank you very much.
I think I'm going to school, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. You see, I heard you said it was serious. Yes.
Sean, do you want to make a statement? Quick, quick, quick.
Oh.
Nathan, how do you hear me?
I'm in Bradley. Uh, yeah, I'm able to hear you just fine.
Fantastic. I'll start my video when the wrestling council gets in. Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
By the way, I love the new background.
Yeah, I think Lucas put it up.
Tell him nice job.
Yeah, Lucas says he's the best.
Yes, he is.
Hey Dave, you good to go?
I'm good to go.
Okay, awesome. We're just waiting on Barbara.
Okay.
Roll call, please.
Certainly, Mayor Protem. Councilmember Ferraro. Councilmember Lewis.
Here.
Councilmember Parisam.
Here.
Mayor Protem Seo.
Here.
Mayor Bradley Viasum.
Here.
Thank you.
Our next item is the Pledge of Allegiance.
And can we have Connor Mellon today lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Please come up to the mic.
Audience, please rise. All those in uniform salute. All those not, put your right hand over your heart. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Our next item is the closed session report.
Mr. Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Members of the City Council, ladies and gentlemen, with apologies for the fact that we came back a little late to start the council meeting. We had a very busy closed session, but there's one thing I want to add before we do that, and that is, did you all get a look at that merit badge sash? That's a ton of merit badges. And I've got sons who are Eagle Scouts that don't have that many merit badges, so that was pretty awesome. But I digress. So Agenda Item Number One involved a series of notices of violation issued by the Regional Water Quality Board. The City Council has the authority to talk about these notices of violation in closed session pursuant to Government Code, Section 54956.9C, D2, and E2. There was a privilege and confidential briefing by staff and legal counsel. The Regional Board has issued a series of settlement proposals with respect to each of these so-called notices of violation. The City Council unanimously authorized the city to participate in those settlements, subject to an appropriate letter acknowledging participation in the settlement, but disclaiming liability on the part of the city. With respect to the second closed session agenda and exposure to litigation pursuant to Government Code, Section 54956.9D2, or D3 and E1, there was a privilege and confidential briefing on steps that could be taken by the city to reduce its exposure to litigation. The City Council unanimously directed a City Council Subcommittee consisting of the mayor and Councilmember Parisam to work with city staff to further pursue options to reduce the city's exposure to litigation. With respect to Agenda Item Number Three, one matter of pending litigation to which the city is a party, the authority to meet in closed session here was Government Code, Section 54956.9D1. We briefed the council on one matter of pending litigation. The title of the litigation is Verde Estates, Inc. versus the City of Rancho Palos Fuentes, Los Angeles County Superior Court, Case Number 25STCV14553. The City Council, the city's litigation council provided the council with a privilege and confidential briefing. Questions were asked and answered, but no reportable action was taken. Agenda Item Number Four is continued to a future city council meeting. Agenda Item Number Five involved the city considering whether to initiate litigation in two cases. The authority to meet in closed session is Government Code, Section 54956.9E. The City Council received a privilege and confidential briefing of steps that could be taken by the city. The City Council directed the city manager and the city attorney's office to bring back a more detailed outline of the steps that will need to be taken with respect to possible future action, but no reportable action was taken. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem.
Thank you very much. Next item.
Our next item are the, if I may ask for, forgive me, Mayor's announcement is your next item.
Thank you very much.
Jumped ahead there.
So this is the best part of our job as a city council and on behalf of the mayor, we get to recognize individuals that have done exceptional things for our city. And tonight, we get to recognize Connor Glenn Mellon here, who just led us in the Pledge of Allegiance. He's getting a certificate of recognition. And before we head up there to recognize you, I just want to read the actual statement on the, on the certificate. It says, "On behalf of the City of Rancho Palos Fuentes City Council, we commend you for achieving the rank of Eagle Scout. This prestigious honor is not easily earned and represents years of dedication, hard work, and a commitment to service. You have demonstrated exceptional leadership, perseverance, and a strong sense of responsibility, all of which are the core values of scouting. Congratulations on this well-deserved achievement, and we wish you continued success in all your future endeavors. We proudly honor and celebrate this remarkable accomplishment with the representation of this certificate of recognition." Connor, can you please come up?
Yeah. Um, it was a great experience, Boy Scouts. I've been through a lot with whitewater rafting and just getting to meet new people. It was a great learning experience, and I think a lot of kids these days should participate. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mayor Bradley, I know you're our resident Eagle Scout, so you want to say a couple words, please?
Connor, congratulations. It's a tremendous accomplishment. I'm sure your parents and family are very proud of you. Congratulations on a job well done.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Connor. Fan members, you want to come up here so we take a picture real quick? That'd be great.
And Mayor Protem, I'm an Eagle Scout.
Oh, yeah, I forgot about that.
I'm curious, while your parents are coming up, what was your project? What was your Eagle Scout project?
Uh, my project was building a storage cabinet for North High School, two of them. Did you ever get to Amwell Bay? I did. Alright, cool. That's not my favorite camping area. How about film? I don't think so. Badges. Bottom real quick. Thank that. I do not feel so. Sorry, I'm not getting right on. One more, you can move your neck and chin. Hide in your torso. There we go. I saw you. That's all. That's all. Get one more. Thank you, Marano.
Thank you so much. Good job. Congratulations.
Do you have a badge for fly fishing? For what? Do you have a badge for fly fishing? Longage casting, they will give you a complete class on fly fishing. Cool. Thank you.
Okay. I believe that concludes our mayor's announcements. Next item, please.
Our next item is, if we may please have a vote to move approval for the recycle and emergency personal preparedness kit drawing winners, Agatha Falaktu and Daniela Sasha Koneko.
Can I get a motion to approve, please?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Ferraro.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Councilmember Parisam.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Seo. Mayor Bradley.
Yes.
Our next item is the approval of the agenda.
Are you going to motion to approve the agenda?
Move approval of the agenda.
Second.
Councilmember Parisam.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferraro.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Seo.
Yes.
Mayor Bradley.
Yes.
With that, we can move to our public comments for non-agenda items. Seeing none, we can move to our city manager's report.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor Protem.
Good evening.
Mayor and members of the City Council and our viewing audience. I'd like to start my report this evening talking about the Public Safety Reimbursement Program. So the council may know and the public may know, we have this program. It's funded. It's, we've got $2,000 for neighborhoods that they can call, they can come in, submit an application. There we go. You, if you want to get a surveillance camera for your neighborhood, and whether you're part of an HOA or a track, it's $2,000. It's a reimbursement grant. You just have to submit the application, and if you're an individual, it's $100. You can get a Ring camera or any other surveillance camera. So this program is available, and you can go to the city's website for more information on that. Thursday is June 19th. It's also known as Juneteenth, and I just want to say that the city recognizes those that are recognizing this holiday. This is a holiday that recognizes diversity, resilience, and unity, so the city joins in recognizing Juneteenth on June 19th. Well, it's last call. I think I've been mentioning this at every city, every council meeting over the last four or five meetings. Last call. We're calling for any of our students out there that are in grades seven through 12th grade that are RPV residents and want to get involved and have a voice in, in what we do in the community. We're asking for applications. We have nine vacancies for the city's youth advisory committee, so if you're interested, you know anybody in grade seven through 12th that are an RPV resident, we have applications that's available on the city's website, and you could go there, fill it out, and turn it in by June 30th. Next slide. And you may recall last meeting, we had our furry pets here, and we were talking about Pedro Pets as well as L'Arche and recognizing all the efforts that they do. And so we mentioned that every quarter we have a pet adoption, so the next one is around the corner. It's actually Sunday, July 6th. If you're interested in adopting a dog or a cat, and go to Eastview Park, and it's between So we take this very seriously, and if you do launch and we observe it, we will cite you. We take it very seriously. Next slide. And of course, we have an alternative, so you don't need to launch fireworks at your house. You can come to the Kendieta Civic Center on July 4th. We have our big annual event where it starts at 3:00 to 9:00 p.m. We have, we're going to have food, food trucks, we'll have arts and crafts, we'll have actual amusement rides for the kids. And we also will have, at 8:45 is when we start our drone show. This is our third year doing the drone show. It's a spectacular show. It's approximately 200 drones that we choreographed to music. So if you're looking for something to do, in fact, don't make any other plans, come to the Kendieta Civic Center. I strongly suggest that you come early because it fills up, the parking lot gets pretty crazy, and we tend to have an influx of cars around 8:00, and that's probably not the best time to show up. Come early, enjoy the beautiful scenery and the music, there's dancing, a lot of fun. So this is a gift to the residents. Please come out and bring your family and friends. Next slide. And of course, with July 4th being on a Friday, City Hall will be closed, and I just want to remind residents that construction is not permitted on 4th of July. If you do need to do something, you can apply for a special construction permit, but those are typically not granted unless there's unique circumstances. So enjoy the holiday, enjoy the nation's birthday. And that takes me to my last slide. I just want to say, wish everyone a happy and safe 4th of July as we celebrate the nation's independence. And that concludes my report this evening.
Thank you. Next item?
Our next item is the consent calendar. Late correspondence was distributed earlier for item letter K.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Move approval.
Second.
Councilmember Ferraro?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Peristam?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Seo?
Yes.
Mayor Bradley?
Yes.
With that, we can move to our first item under public hearing. Consideration to adopt the fiscal year 2025-26 budget for all city funds, five-year capital improvement program, and improvement authorities. Notice of the public hearing was duly published, late correspondence was distributed, and I do not have any request to speak.
Thank you. I'll declare the public hearing open at this time. Can I have a staff report, please?
Good evening, Mayor Protem and city council member. Tonight is the, sorry, one second, let me share. Tonight is the last presentation of the fiscal year 25-26 budget. And before I get started, Mayor Protem, if I may, I want to thank the city council for your help, as this is our last meeting for budget. Also, of course, city manager and the city departments, and of course, our finance team, the two of them are here, they're here somewhere. But I just want to thank the team for helping me out for the fiscal year 25-26. Thank you. For fiscal year 25-26, the first slide here for the viewing audience, just to give a background, and when the budget process started, the process actually started back in March, where city council held a goal workshop, and they gave us, and you gave us additional direction at the April 17 meeting for the general fund budget, where we presented the details of the proposed fiscal year 25-26. And additionally, on April 29, the public works team presented the capital improvement program for, or CIP program. And on June 3, you approve any of the changes since the budget workshop, and tonight, we're requesting for your approval to adopt the fiscal year 25-26 budget. Starting with sources, this is a summary of all funds. This is including all budget. For 40, as you can see here, the pie chart, the 41.8 million is from general fund, or 53%. 20% or 16.3% are from restricted funds or special revenue funds. 8.5 million or 11% from this capital infrastructure program fund. 11.8 million, we're using fund balance, and then finally, 800,000 from other miscellaneous funds. Moving on to the uses or expenditures for all funds. Again, general fund at 41.8 million or 53%. 17.5 million or 22% from the CIP fund. 18.2 million or 23% from special revenue funds or restricted funds. And then finally, 1.7 million or 2% from other funds. Focusing now on the general fund, the draft fiscal year 25-26 budget includes recurring and one-time, these are the operating revenues for the city, 41.5 million, with operating expenditures at 37.2. The revenue exceeding expenditures are then transferred mostly to the capital project. Focusing now on the general fund for sources for 41.8 million, number one tax, or number one revenue source for the city is the property tax at 44%. Oh, sorry, at 18, at 18.2 million. TOT 17% or 7 million, permits and fees at 4.4 million or 11%, and the remaining tax and fees are less than 3 million. Some background on the TOT for general fund sources. For fiscal year 25-26, the draft budget includes 7 million. This is based on our projected 70 million occupancy sales from our hotels. The city's tax rate for TOT is 10%. And so for fiscal year 25-26, the draft budget includes 7 million. One category I wanted to point out is the interest earnings. So this is our history for our interest earnings for all funds. As you could see from on the right side, for fiscal year 25-26, the draft budget includes 2 million of interest earnings for all funds. Prior to that, and that's mainly because our cash balance dropped to 80 million, we used to manage approximately 100 million in cash prior to 2026. You could see there, since 2022, our interest earnings increased by about 2 million since 2022. And on the left side there, you'll see where we invest, the city's funds. We have LAVE, which is the state of California. We also have some CDs. We also have some treasury agency bonds, money market with our operating bank, BMO. And finally, we manage approximately 5 million in our checking account. For sales tax, just some background here, for the 9.5% of the sales tax for our sales, the city receives approximately three, or in the draft budget, we project 3 million. Of that amount, that is, the city's allocation is approximately 1.06 out of the 9.5. On the right side there, you'll see that that's an estimated about 27 million of sales tax for the city. The state gets approximately, sorry about that, the state gets approximately 11.2 million. LA County gets approximately almost 10 million, and other agencies at 2.8 million, and the city shares 3 million. On the UUT, the city's current rate is 3%. For fiscal year 25-26, the draft budget is 2.5 million. On the left side there on the screen, you'll see that that's based on approximately 83 million in UUT, and 3% is 2.5 million. Electricity is being the highest, at 1.2 million, water at 900,000, and gas at 400,000. Now I'll go over the general uses or expenditures for general fund at 41.8 million, starting with the salaries at 15.3 million or 37%. Operation and maintenance at 11 million or 26%. Public safety at 9.6 million or 23%. Transfers out, majority of this item is to the capital infrastructure program fund. And then finally, legal service at 1.3 million or 3%. Our fiscal year, our draft budget for 25-26 also includes department reductions of approximately And this chart here is just a breakdown per department. Public safety at 23%, 9.6 million. Public works at 8.1 million and 19%. This amount here is not including capital. Recreation and parks at 12%. Community development at 11%. City admin at 11%, and the remaining are less than, less than 3, I'm sorry, less than 5%. And then finally, transfers out at 11%. Background on the personnel for the 15.7 million for fiscal year 25-26, it includes 78 full-time positions, 65 part-time positions or 31 full-time equivalent. This amount also includes year one of the three-year contract that the city approved, an MOU and RPVA. This also includes all city management. This formula also includes a 3% vacancy rate and three changes as stated there at the bottom. So the first personnel that's included in this budget is the public safety manager, recreation coordinator for open space and trails, and also a reclass for the finance department from accounting clerk to admin assistant. Moving on to uses for the LASD contract. As you may recall from the prior slide, the public safety is at 9.6, excuse me, I'll break it down to two, one for the contract and then one for the internal department. So this one is the contract with LASD at 8.6 million. This includes liability trust fund, it's approximately 13%. 56-hour unit deputy, and then the remaining are deputies as well with different categories. For public safety division, this is an internal department, 1 million for fiscal year 25-26. As you could see, this line, or this division here increased starting in 2024. And if you recall, this program started in 2024, and we anticipate to go live in 2026. This includes two full-time positions, one U, as I mentioned earlier, for the public safety manager, five part-time positions for full-time equivalent, and it also includes operations and maintenance. I'll now move on to the capital improvement program by program. So for fiscal year 25-26, the draft budget includes 21 projects at 28.6 million. 52% of these projects are for landslide projects, improvements, and maintenance at 14.8 million. 24% or 7 million for the right-of-way improvement. 10% or 2.9 million for the sewer and storm drain improvement. 11% or 3 million for the Avalon Cove Sanituer Sewer System. About 500,000 or 2% for building improvement, and finally, 400% for parks and open space at 1%. This is just a quick summary of the funding source. Approximately 16.4 million is from the capital infrastructure program fund, and then the remaining are from grants or special restricted funds at 12.2 million. I'll now go through the fiscal year 25-26 fund balance. So for general fund, the fiscal year 25-26, based on the draft budget, it's, we estimate to end the year at 27.3 million. 17 million is the 50% reserve policy, and at the end of June 30, 2026, the estimated allocated is 10.3 million. On the capital infrastructure program fund for fiscal year 25-26, we are looking at 7.2 million, fund balance, emergency project reserve of 5 million with estimated ending balance, assuming all 21 projects are completed in fiscal year 25-26. That would leave us with a 2.2 million at the end of fiscal year 25-26. And then finally, based on our, when we started the process, the direction that we received from city council, we're also working on a financial sustainability goal. The goal for this project is to do some research on our revenue sources and also some capital review. Just from the top there, the staff and also with city council help, we are working on grants from both local and federal level. We're also going to review suspended taxes and fees. We're also doing some research on TOT, golf, and UUT, franchise fees, storm drain fees. And then finally, from the last direction that we receive from city council, we will start reviewing the capital program every 60 days as part of the landslide report for potentially lower the spending in capital. And that concludes my presentation, Mayor Protem.
Thank you very much. You know, on behalf of the city council, I just want to say thank you very much, guys, for putting together an awesome report and just working super hard for the past couple months, just trying to get us and keep us afloat. So my hat's off to you guys. Thank you very much. At this time, is there any questions from the council?
We did have a last-minute speaker log on for Zoom, Mayor Protem.
We're going to take that first.
As you wish.
You guys wanted to do questions first? Any questions? Any questions? Mayor Bradley, any questions? Statements?
Not at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to testimony from members of the public. Thank you, city.
Staff is reaching out to her.
Thank you. She just had one?
Correct.
I went ahead and emailed the speaker. They haven't signed into Zoom yet.
Do we have a phone number for her, him?
Unfortunately, she didn't leave a phone number. I could see if we have her number from past Zoom meetings.
Okay. We'll give her a minute. If not, yeah, after the minute, then what I'll do is I'll close the hearing, and then we can come back to her if she jumps back on. Let's give her a couple seconds. Nother?
No.
Okay. All right, then what I'll do is I'll close the hearing now, and then we'll come back to her for public comment. Council deliberation. Any comments, questions?
One comment.
Councilmember Lewis?
This is a clarification, because it was my discussion, I think, or my prompting that created recommended council action four in the agenda report. And I just want to put a clarification in. I'll read the text here. It says, "Firm the plan, and if warranted, find 4.5 million," which is 50% of the projected deficit, "identified as a possible cost containment." And just a solid clarification, because I probably didn't say this right last time
We'll give her a minute. If not, um, after, yeah, after, yeah, after the minute, then, uh, what I'll do is I'll close the hearing and then we can come back to her if she jumps back on. Let's give her a couple of seconds. Still nothing, Nathan? Nada?
No.
Okay. All right, then what I'll do is I'll, I'll close the hearing now and then we'll come back to her for public comment. Uh, council deliberation. Any comments, questions?
One comment.
Councilmember Lewis?
This is a clarification. This is a clarification, uh, cause it was my discussion, I think, or my prompting that created recommended council action four in the, uh, agenda report. Um, and I just want to put a clarification in. I'll read the text here. It says, firm the plan. And if warranted, find, uh, four point five million, which is fifty percent of the projected deficit identified, um, as a possible cost containment. And just a, a solid clarification, because I probably didn't say this right last time, was that my goal was to sort of stack rank the items so that we don't know how much savings, if any, will be able to implement or desire. But if it's one million, we'd identify the first million that would go. And then if it's two million, the next, first two million that would go, as opposed to just two buckets of four point five in, four point five out. That's my only comment. This is a clarification. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Councilmember Ferraro? No. Dave?
No.
Councilmember Parisam?
Thank, thank you, Mayor Protim. I just want to add to, uh, to the Mayor Protim's comments. This is a really different year. This is my first time through this process, but I know this was not a typical process for putting a budget together because the circumstances are so different. And I just want to congratulate staff on doing a great job. And they've been through a lot and we've put them through a lot over the last four months, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Parisam. Um, so at this, at this point, I'd last, I'd ask for a motion. Councilmember Lewis, I know you want to make an amendment, so do you want to just clarify that on the record so that they can get that down?
Yeah, just for amendment four, that, um, sixty day progress report should consider containing spending by ranking the items in, you know, preferential order of being able to be cut as opposed to just one bucket of items that are indistinguishable. That's all.
Yes, Councilmember.
I have a question regarding that. Is that for entire projects in their entirety? Or is it possible it could be a combination of projects that could be reduced?
My intent was to, to capture the entire deficit amount. In discussions last week, we sort of settled on fifty percent. Uh, I think we should rank all nine million, at least identify nine million, which would give us a true balanced budget.
Okay.
Okay with that.
Thank you.
Mayor Bradley, okay with that?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferraro? Yes. Based on the motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Well, it, it's a motion to adopt staff recommendations as amended.
Correct, as with amendment.
Correct.
Councilman Lewis, you made the motion with the amendment and Councilmember, uh, Parisam, you seconded it.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Roll call, please.
Certainly. And just for the record, our speaker clarified that she was desirous only of watching the, the exchange.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Parisam?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferraro?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Seo?
Yes.
Mayor Bradley?
Yes.
Motion passes. With that, we can move to our item number two under regular business. Consider the California Department of Forestry and Fire Protections updated twenty twenty five fire hazard safety severity, uh, fire hazard severity zone map. And I currently have three requests to speak.
Uh, can we get a staff report first, please?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers.
Hello, hello.
The presentation of who's speaking? This is Luna Mohammed, the emergency management coordinator.
Luna speaking.
I can't really hear you. Sorry. Can you hear me better?
Yeah, there we go. Thank you.
Yes. Um, so I know that term is a handful. It is fire hazard severity zone map. This is, uh, something that was presented to us as a map update recommendation from CAL FIRE. Um, and today I'm asking you guys for your first consideration for the ordinance. So just giving you some background. Like I said, this map was developed by California Department of Forestry and Fire Protection, or CAL FIRE as we know them. It was developed a while back in the nineteen eighties, um, for state responsibility areas. And then in nineteen ninety five, they added the local responsibility areas, which includes, um, the cities like ours. Uh, and our last update was in two thousand eight. Recently, in twenty twenty two, we, the CAL FIRE began the process of updating the maps and they completed uh, our section. They did it in phases and they completed our section March twenty fourth, twenty twenty five. And the goal of this map is to understand the wildfire hazard throughout California and, uh, take mitigation efforts, specifically defensible space and fuel modification efforts, along with some building code changes to help, um, mitigate that, that hazard risk uh, and reduce overall fire risk. So giving you guys a, a look, a visual of what the recommended map update includes. To your left, you'll see two thousand eight, pretty much the entirety of the city was under a very high fire hazard severity zone designation. About half of the city now is largely that central area. You can see the western and eastern portions are largely taken out. You may also notice some new colors. So, um, part of the, the change includes new classifications, including a high and moderate zone. These require less, um, there's less requirements for them than the very high fire severity zone class, classification. Specifically, there's no defensible space inspections or enforcement tied to the high and moderate zones. Um, and sorry. And a big change here is incorporation of new data. So we had, um, stock data that was utilized for the initial maps, the updated map of two thousand eight. But this new map includes climate data from two thousand three up through two thousand eighteen. It includes, uh, new considerations for ember cast, for flame length. Uh, it looks at, uh, the temperature, humidity and wind speed over a fifty year period and looks at the probability of an area burning and the expected fire behavior under now the most extreme conditions. So tho- those are some of the differences that caused this reduction. And most of California, we did see increases in very high classifications. We are one of the areas that did see a reduction across the peninsula. Um, so today we are asking the city council to consider approving the updated maps as recommended by CAL, CAL FIRE with no changes. The alternative would be, we cannot decrease any zones. So that's not an option, but we can increase zones. If we increased an area that's no longer in any color to like moderate or high, we wouldn't have to provide any justification, uh, to CAL FIRE. But if we moved any of the zones that are not very high to a very high classification, we would have to provide some form of justification, specifically new climate data, since this, this climate data only really pulls up to twenty eighteen. So if an area were to have new climate data or fire history since twenty eighteen that they could present as a, a solid justification for that increase, they could. And that's again, because the very high fire classification is tied to defensible space inspections and enforcement and fuel modifications. So it does have more stringent regulations than any of the other zones or no zone at all. So just looking at some of these impacts, and I really want to highlight and start with the fact that none of this takes into effect till January first, twenty twenty six. So there are current defensible space inspections ongoing in our city. This will not impact them in any way. This will take effect for the next defensible space inspections. A few of the things that would be changing, we would have a slight modification to Title Eight because it's currently just focused on the very high classification. So we would just add in moderate and high to that Title Eight language. Uh, the defensible space inspections and enforcement only apply to the very high fire severity zones. So about half of the city that's now taken out of those will no longer be subjected to those as of twenty twenty six. The, using hazard disclosure, so having to disclose that you have a fire hazard only applies to the very high and high. There's still legislation and discussion about the moderate zone. And, um, it is important to note that as legislation changes, the, the moderate and high zones could change in some of their regulations as we've seen in the past. We need to incorporate these zones into our plans specifically. The city is currently working with the three other cities on the peninsula and the two abatement districts on a multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan. Uh, the city's general plan safety element will be incorporating these new maps along with, um, the natural committee conservation plan slash habitat conservation plan. And as I mentioned, there are impacts that are not seen yet because legislation can change, grant requirements can change, project requirements can change, insurance can look at these maps, but this would not be a determining factor by itself because insurance looks at risks. So hazard is included in risks. Multiple models are included when looking at those hazards by insurance companies. But mitigation efforts are also looked at, and these maps do not look at mitigation whatsoever. They completely focus on the hazard and not the risk. So that means i- if you build new buildings or change the building code or, um, clean up and make defensible space around your area, that is not looked at when showing the hazard. This is specifically looking at the wildfire hazard, that, uh, wildland spread of fire when we're looking at the hazard map by itself. But it can have those impacts, the state building code. Uh, the new one will be published in January of, January first, twenty twenty six as well. So this could have impacts on that, but at this time, we couldn't speak definitively on exactly what any of those impacts would look like. What will not be impacted is wildfire preventative actions during fire weather. So our red flag protocols within the city of like burn bans, of not using power tools by us or by our contractors, um, closures of preserves. Those types of actions will remain as is because again, this does not impact our risk. It helps us better understand the hazard and feeds into the defensible space inspections and enforcement. Uh, our firefighter readiness, Los Angeles County Fire Department will not be changing anything based on these maps. Staffing is based on fire weather, on the current conditions and not on the hazard. So that will not change in any way, shape or form. Neither will our fire risk or the individual responsibility, both of the city to manage our own fuel, fuel modification plans, but of every single resident to be able to manage their own defensible space. Just because you don't have an inspection, just because it's not a regulation, doesn't mean that we don't all have a responsibility to try to reduce the impacts of wildfires and reduce their spreads, to protect ourselves, but to protect the community as a whole as well. Uh, so that should not change, um, at all. Just on that individual mentality of your responsibilities there. And similarly, the city is not planning to change anything about our fuel modification projects or plans based on this new hazard map because we still want to continue to take on that responsibility of trying to reduce that wildfire risk and keep our community safe. Uh, so today, what, uh, we are recommending to the city councils to consider the proposed map. And consider adopting it and adopting the ordinance as is. We're introducing the ordinance, um, for the map and the amended section eight point oh, eight point oh, six oh of Title Eight of the Rancho Palos Verdes Municipal Code. And the second reading for this will be on July first for, uh, official adoption.
Got it. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Any questions from city council? Councilmember Parisam?
Thank you, Mayor Protim. Uh, two questions. First is, uh, how, what is the impact or intersection with what's taking effect in January and Zone Zero? Cause it seems like if, in, in the, in the staff report, it says, if you're not in a very high fire zone, uh, you're no longer going to be impacted by Zone Zero. And if you are in a high, very high, you're still going to be impacted by that. Cause it's gonna be a lot of different communication that's going to be necessary on the part of the city, the county and so on to correct the messaging of the last three years. But I wanted to make sure that what I'm saying is correct or any, please, any clarification?
So I'll take my stab at this. Uh, Chief Kane, if I miss anything, please correct me or add to it. So you're correct in the presumption, only the very high fire severity zones as of next year will, um, have any defensible space regulations, including Zone Zero. Zone Zero portion of it was adopted this year, so it's in the defensible space inspections this year to just include, uh, plants and, um, other flammable material that is on the building. So like vines on a building, uh, that's this year. The rollout for Zone Zero is going to be over a three year period and the legislation is still being determined. So it will, as of next year, only apply to those very high, since they'll be the only ones forced to do the defensible space inspections. I still will reiterate that the purpose of having Zone Zero is to help us reduce that wildfire spread and that wildfire risk. So even if you are removed, if you're able to do it, um, definitely recommended. It is one of the ways that we protect our property and protect our community.
So, so is this is still a work in progress? This is just where we are right now with Zone Zero and the very high fire zone?
Correct.
Okay, great. I appreciate the clarification. I'm sure that a lot of people in the city will also. Second point is the, the new revised maps are sort of fuzzy, or at least the ones, versions I've seen. And at the end of the day, people are going to be affected by, by the exactness of their property. Do we have a map that you can look at and property by property, uh, make that determination of what, what your category is?
We do. Um, so if you go to rpvca.gov forward slash emergency, we have a banner with a fire hazard severity zone webpage. And we've embedded CAL FIRE's map and that is a searchable map. Uh, you can change the topography. So if you want to see it with streets or with mountain ranges or whatever it is, whatever layer you would like to see, it also has a sliding scale, so you can see the previous map and the new map. Aside from that, once the map is adopted, we will add it to the city's GIS layer. But the current map as is, you can change the transparency of the layers. You're, you can search your address to see exactly where you are. So it does have significant capability for anyone who wants to online to do that. Uh, once we adopt the map, we'll add it to GIS and, uh, I will give the city clerk a physical copy if the public ever wants to, isn't tech savvy and wants to physically, um, check out those maps as well.
Okay, great. Thank you so much for the clarification. Thank you, Mayor Protim.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Mayor?
No questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Can we have, uh, public comments, please?
Certainly. And we're down to one speaker, Mayor. The other two, uh, Zoom participants, um, are not available. And one mentioned that she was only watching as well.
Got it. Thank you.
Our speaker here is Don Huesman.
Hello, Ms. Houston.
My name is Don Huesman. I live in two, seven, seven, eight Cali Aventura, Rancho Palos Verdes. We live next to a canyon called Santa Muerte Canyon. I'm on Palos Verdes Drive East and Santa Muerte Road, or the two roads that cover the canyon. We have extensive brush down there. We've had a lot of rain and it's getting huge. I propose we can get goats in there and remove the brush in about a year's time with goats. Maybe, if we could get fire grazer who has three hundred goats, they could put in that canyon. That could remove it probably in about three or four months. I don't know if the goats can eat vegetation when it gets really dry during the hot summers. But, uh, that would be a very good solution. Now, I've talked to fire, and fire grazers has, uh, Michael Chow has operated in the city before. And unfortunately, our homeowners association rejected him three times and he went from three hundred dollars an acre to three thousand dollars an acre because he got pissed at. I don't blame him. And, uh, the justice of this world was that one of the guys that sat on our homeowners association's house burnt down. You remember that house? Cause that's where the fireman was killed recently. But anyway, enough of that. The, uh, CAL FIRE, I tried to, I, I, I put three weeks of hard work in there trying to find this. But I think CAL FIRE has a program where they would pay for goat herders to come in and, uh, get rid of vegetation. Our vegetation is really bad. It's, it's seventeen feet high. So, uh, do you know if CAL FIRE's could take and pay for the goat herds to come in and, uh?
I'm not aware of a program that they do. Um, Chief Kane's shaking his head no either. We are not aware of any programs that they provide at the. Chief Kane's shaking his head no either. We are not aware of any programs that they provide at this time to do what you're describing.
Mr. Housman, I can point you to RIR has a comment he can tell you.
I was just going to say the questions should be directed to the council, not to staff.
Okay, so I'm confused now. Who do I talk to?
You can ask, RIR can answer that question.
Repeat your question.
I thought that CAL FIRE had a program to pay for remuneration of your brush and stuff with some kind of funds or something like that.
What we have done in the past, and we have been selected, are we apply for grants through CAL ES or through FEMA, the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. And we have received funding to reimburse us for some of the costs for our use of the goats.
What was the name of the group that you talked to?
So there are grants that are issued by FEMA called the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. And it's administered through CAL ES, which is the state. And Mr. Mayor Prostam, he should probably be.
Yeah, and Ms. Housman, just to give you a heads up, what we can do is get with you offline and get your information and figure out what we can do about that canyon.
Okay, what phone number do I call?
Yeah, Ramsey can give you a card there. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Any other public comments?
No further speakers, Mayor Prostam.
Thank you. Council deliberation? Anything?
I'll move staff recommendation.
Mr. Mayor, anything?
No.
Okay, there's a motion on the table. Is there a second?
Hey, guys.
She moved.
To approve?
Correct. Staff recommendation. We have a second. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
And Mr. Mayor Prostam, I just want to clarify, in the ordinance, it should actually read to repeal and replace because we're actually repealing the language. So I just want the record to show that it's a repeal and replace.
And with that amendment?
Councilmember Ferraro?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
As amended, yes.
Councilmember Prostam?
Yes.
Mayor Prostam Seo?
Yes.
Mayor Bradley?
Yes.
Motion passes. With that, we can move to our final item, number three, consideration to approve the fiscal year 2026, 2025-26 Los Angeles Sheriff's Department Service Level Authorization for Public Safety Services and receive a Public Safety Division status update.
Thank you. Can we have a staff report, please?
Good evening. Honorable mayor and city councilmembers, just a second while I pull up my presentation.
No worries.
All right. Thank you, Catherine. So tonight, I'll be providing you all with a summary regarding the city-proposed law enforcement services agreement for fiscal year 2025-2026, under our ongoing contract with the Los Angeles Sheriff's, County Sheriff's Department, as well as an update on the Public Safety Division. So the city of Rancho Palos Verdes continues to partner with ESD through a cost-sharing contract alongside Rolling Hills Estates and Rolling Hills. Last year, the city entered a five-year municipal law enforcement services agreement, or Melisa, with ESD. This agreement outlines a list of available services, and RPV is responsible for 68% of that cost. So each year, we formalize the specific services through the annual 575 contract. This rate increases yearly, and it is set by the county auditor control, the controller. Tonight, we're seeking council approval of the fiscal year 2025-26 Annual 575, which maintains the current level of service at a proposed cost of $8,583,899, which is a 5% total increase from the previous year. The increase reflects adjustments in the deputy sheriff's service unit at 4.3%, a rise in the liability trust fund increase from 12.5% to 13%, and a 6.63 increase in the bonus one deputy classification, bringing our increase total to $410,821 from last year's contract. Highlighting the key components for the ESD 575, our 56-hour unit deputies, which are the cars and the line deputies specifically, they provide essential law enforcement functions, including the emergency responses, the calls for service, traffic enforcement, and general patrol. They are required to fill every single shift, and deputies are deployed across three daily shifts. So typically, we have about six cars, according to the contract, in the AM, six cars, according to the EM, also known as early mornings, and five cars in the PM. The next part of our contract is the non-relief deputies. So these positions, they are not backfilled when they're assigned to the deputy if they are off duty, but they're still required to fill their obligated contract minutes. So these differ than the 56-hour unit, which are required to be on their shift for those seven days a week versus these, again, if they're not filled during that time, they're not required to be backfilled. This is a shared cost between, again, the contract city or the peninsula cities, and are utilized jointly by the peninsula cities. We have two non-relief deputy traffic cars, two community relations or core deputies that is also partially funded through the COPS grant, one dedicated motor deputy for targeted traffic enforcement. And then at the bottom, you see we have our bonus one deputy, which are three detectives for the surveillance and apprehension team, also known as the SAT team, and they're primarily dedicated to investigation and crime suppression efforts. So their total increased by 6.63% for fiscal year 25-26, adding to the increase for our contract at $58,906. Speaking earlier about the compliance where they have to fulfill the minutes, in terms of service accountability, all deputies log their minutes daily and are coded by the call type or the areas of patrol. The LUMITA Sheriff's Station tracks these service minutes, ensuring compliance with the contract obligations. If compliance drops below anything below 98%, the station captain is required to meet with the city manager to address the shortfall. As of right now, the LUMITA station is complying with the 98% and above. Another thing that increased our contract this year was the liability trust fund. This covers the legal and insurance costs related to ESD services. This increased to 13% this fiscal year and is embedded within the final unit rate charges. It's also really important to note that due to department-wide staffing shortage of over 1,000 deputies, ESD has instituted a service growth moratorium onto our contract. Therefore, we are currently only permitted to maintain or reduce service levels, not increase anything on our contract for approximately the next few years. Our proposed contract reflects no change in the deployment levels for fiscal year, from fiscal year 24-25. One strategy that the cities can use to implement is the use of supplemental overtime outside the scope of the Melisa contract. This tool allows the city to try to enhance the patrol coverage and to address targeted public safety issues like traffic and crime hotspots. While ESD is not obligated to fulfill these overtime patrols, as these shifts are completely voluntary, we have allocated $70,000 in the fiscal year 2025-2026 budget for this purpose, consistent with the prior year. So transitioning over to the Public Safety Division, I am pleased to present the status update on our division and our ongoing mission to ensure and enhance the public safety for our community through coordination and partnership with ESD, data-driven enforcement, and meaningful community engagement. With that, we'll go to our staffing update. As you all are aware, I was hired back in December 2024, and I lead the coordination with ESD, oversee training and development for our staff, as well as oversee the sheriff's contract. With our senior admin analyst, recruitment is nearing the completion with onboarding target for hopefully July, targeted date for July. This role will support data analysis, grant writing, and contract management. Our public safety liaisons, who you guys met just a few months ago, transitioned from part-time rangers in January. They're currently patrolling the neighborhoods, documenting daily activity, and also training and prepping to be dispatchable for non-emergency calls for service in partnership with the LUMITA Sheriff's Station, led by myself and our new field training officer. With that, we have hired our field training officer, Gregory Miller, who you guys met just a few weeks ago in late May, and is actively implementing classroom-based training activity. The PSLs will begin field training activity in mid-July, once they have cleared backgrounds through ESD. To preface this slide, we try and take pictures at our events that we attend. Unfortunately, I am in all of the pictures, and I, for whatever reason, like to make a lot of different facial expressions. So I apologize, and we'll do better at taking more appropriate pictures. But selfishly, this is actually one of my favorite parts of my job, is the community engagement and outreach. I absolutely love speaking with the residents and the community members and hearing their concerns. Sometimes this job can be a little serious, so when we're out in the community, it's really nice to have that fun facing, but also educate them in crime prevention. So with that, staff in ESD have participated in HOA and Neighborhood Watch meetings and launched multiple public education campaigns on crime prevention and reporting suspicious activity to the LUMITA Sheriff's Station. We're also enhancing visibility through flyers, social media, website content to educate residents about safety protocols and ESD's responsibilities. Back in March, we conducted our public safety survey with 565 participants, with the top three concerns being traffic issues, residential and vehicle burglaries, bike safety. And Public Safety is currently using that data to drive targeted enforcement operations with ESD and also further planning for education campaigns regarding the other safety concerns. Into our public safety technology, our Alpert trailers, also known as automatic license plate reader trailers. There's one currently operational and being strategically deployed with ESD to support traffic enforcement and also crime deterrence. We also have enhanced GIS mapping technology in partnership with our GIS team to better track those Part I and Part II crimes, identifying hotspots, and align with the enforcement data. These tools support ESD patrol strategy and interdepartmental coordination. For some enforcement highlights in regards to ESD and public safety, the division coordinated with ESD for, sorry, for supplemental overtime weekly operations. Myself and the two sergeants meet month, or bi-weekly, to discuss the different enforcements that are occurring in RPV and utilize that GIS mapping tool to project where we want to target our enforcement. We also have our LE focus, ESD-focused enforcement on the PV Drive East switchbacks. And this supplemental overtime has enabled ESD to conduct additional enforcement, and a full update will be presented to council on July 1st. We've also partnered with our Recreation and Parks Department and Public Works to support the night crowd, prom night crowds at Founder's Park, ensuring a smooth traffic flow and safety. And I do want to extend my gratitude to Wreckin' Parks, as well as Public Works, for their very great coordination with our team, and it seems to be going really well. We look forward to continue this partnership. For future initiatives, as part of the division's pilot program, we are still closely tracking ESD visibility, response times, the crime statistics, community sentiment, and trends identified in partnership with the ESD crime analyst at the station. The ongoing evaluation will inform future program decisions and determine long-term viability. We currently operate with one public safety vehicle and plan to acquire a second in the upcoming fiscal year to allow for greater coverage and for additional public safety liaison shifts. We also are looking to update municipal code signage and develop it with Public Works and Recreation Department to ensure clarity around the city rules and for surveillance uses. Addressing one of the concerns that came out of the survey as well, we are pursuing a peninsula-wide bicycle safety initiative in collaboration with the South Bay Council, or COG, local schools in surrounding areas. ESD currently has literature that we do publicize when we go out to events. And we're also looking into grant funding opportunities to enhance staffing, equipment, and community reimbursement programs, and also for crime deterrence and engagement. With that, staff recommends to authorize the city manager to sign the fiscal year 2025-26 Annual 575 and receive and file the Public Safety Division update. And that concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Questions? Gentlemen? Mayor Bradley?
Yeah, I guess the one question I do have is the liability trust fund continues to go up and up and up. Is there any talk of any way to capitate that? I mean, that seems to be a a liability that is just building, and as far as I can tell, we have not had any incidents within the LUMITA Sheriff's Station area of responsibility that has driven any of those costs. But we seem to be bearing an inordinate amount of those costs for the rest of the Sheriff's Department.
Yes, and I could answer that question. Yes, Mr. Mayor, you're absolutely correct. The liability costs continue to go up. It's an issue that all the contract cities have expressed to contract law, which represents the cities in front of the county and the sheriff's department. It was addressed as, they're putting measures in to try to keep that liability contained. As far as I could recall, what was addressed in the contract that was presented to the council, the Melisa, last year, there were some measures that were in place to help contain those costs, but it's it's really not.
But they haven't been contained?
No, no. The costs continue to go up, and it's, we have very little control over that.
And we have no say on whether something is settled or not. I mean, I don't believe any of the contract cities consortium is ever consulted prior to paying out or not paying out on any of these liabilities. So we are along for the ride and get a bill for what others decide without our input.
Correct. The working group that reviews the five-year contract does not have a say on any settlements or litigation.
I'm very concerned with that on a go-forward basis, just from a financial point of view. It's a liability that we have no control of and just is given to us as a de facto after-the-fact bill for something that we are not driving, continues to be a significant portion of our costs, and our costs continue to go up, and our service seems to continue as going down or capitated based on the fact that there is a deputy shortage.
Ara and Jenna, I don't know if you guys can answer this or not, but is there a rubric or some type of metric where they break down who shoulders the cost of this increase in terms of liability?
I don't have that exact information for you at hand, but I know that the controller auditor does have a formula that they utilize, and it's usually, it's for all of the contract cities that contribute the same exact amount.
Yeah, because I would probably think certain areas of LA County probably have a lot more issues than we do. And I feel like, and I'm pretty sure Mayor agrees with me on this one because he stated the fact, we have no control of the liability. And if we don't have any liability cases coming out of our cities, especially the four cities in our contract, we're shouldering a huge amount of money, a 13% increase as opposed to what we projected of 9.5% on this liability. So I don't know if we have any say in it. I know we probably don't at this point, but that's probably something we should be looking at as staff. And Mr. City Attorney, I don't know how much say we have in that process, but I would love to be able to kind of look at that formula to see if we can tweak it somehow in favor of us, especially if we don't have any liability cases coming from our district.
You know, this is, this is a topic, and just like the mayor said, what you said, I mean, it's the exact same thing. It's some communities don't have the incidents that lead to these payouts, settlements. And so the argument is, why should cities like Rancho Palos Verdes fund that liability when these incidents aren't happening? That's, that's, that's the catch with these joint powers authorities, essentially. I mean, the same could be said about landslides and the insurance and how we have what we're dealing with. Other cities are saying, well, why do we have to pay into this, this pool, this joint pool? So the same applies, but it is something that we continue. Cities such as Rancho Palos Verdes and the other peninsula cities have voiced at contract law about Cities such as Rancho Palos Verdes and the other peninsula cities have voiced at contract law about the equity of this.
Well, and Ara, you bring up landslides, but I believe the Joint Powers Association just limited their liability. We have no way to limit our liability in the liability trust fund for the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department.
Yeah, Jen, if we can somehow get a breakdown of that formula, I'd like to know so that we can pull the levers to see if we can mitigate some of these increases. I have a quick question. We mentioned metrics and I think metrics are very important, especially for the Public Safety Division. So you had a list, a couple items. Do you, that's not exhaustive, the list of all the metrics we're going to be gathering, right?
No, it's a continuous list of all the data that we're receiving for our traffic enforcement, our crime deterrence too, as well as gauging, you know, through the public community survey.
Okay. Yeah, I just want to emphasize that because it only makes sense, especially when we first created this division. We wanted to make sure that we were capturing and doing it much as we could to effectively, I guess, take away some of the responsibilities from Sheriff's Department. And I just want to see what we're doing in terms of numbers and then see if we can track that wholesome, just holistically so that we can make a decision on when we need to pull back on what we need to invest more in. Just as a statement in this, the second question I had was for the P S Ls now, we have three, right? Did they finish training with the F T O? Is there an ongoing process or what have they done so far?
Yes, so it's still an ongoing process. Currently they're under the background investigations for L E S D. Until they clear those backgrounds, they cannot have access to the station. They cannot have access to the mobile digital computer, which is how they'll get dispatched to calls for service as well as not access to the radio. So that does take some time to process. Sometimes it's anywhere between a month to three months. So right now they're only doing the classroom-style training, which is actually a benefit to them as well because they're going to be very familiar with radio codes, stack codes, report writing specifically on C H P one eighties to take non-injury traffic collision reports. So that's what they're getting really well-versed in right now, as well as getting familiar with the reporting districts. They almost know them like the back of their hands. They've been driving up and down those streets like no other. So once that background clearance is complete, that's when they can begin their actual field training process, which can take up to about two to three months. So we're projecting them to be fully dispatchable, hopefully around September, if everything goes accordingly to the plan of clearing the backgrounds.
Okay. Yeah, that was going to be my follow-up to see when the end date was so they can, they can be fully deployable. Okay.
And Mayor Protem, if I may, adding to that data, I believe that that's when we'll be able to collect a little bit more, once they are dispatchable. So we can compare the calls for service and see about the deputies' patrol time if that does increase because the public safety liaisons are taking on those non-emergency calls for service. That'll allocate the deputies to kind of do more active patrol since they're not taking on those calls and then also handle the emergency calls for service too. So we'll take a look at that once they're dispatchable.
Got it. Last question. How are we managing neighborhood watch and just a different block captains? Are we going to bring that in-house? Are we going to like coordinate with them? How, how are we doing that in the future? Because I know
I'll go ahead and answer that one. We work, we communicate, I've been in communication with Gail Lorenzen on a daily basis and we're looping in Catherine as well as Jennifer. And ideally in this, in the ultimate build-out of this division is to bring all those programs in-house. I still, I think we're still a ways away, but we're trying to build that, that relationship and, and bring that over into the city. So it's, it's still a work in progress. But the, one of the things that we're going to be doing in the next couple of weeks is meeting with the captain from the sheriff's station as well as Neighborhood Watch and the Public Safety Division to start to collaborate and see how we can move in that direction.
Okay. And the reason why I emphasize that is because I just want to make sure that we, when we have information, especially for certain activities in emergency, we get the information disseminated as quickly as possible. And there's, there's not a stop somewhere or a break. So by having it in-house, we can control it some more and then in terms of dissemination of information, it goes out as fast as possible.
It, it, that's very critical. I, I, I know I've talked to the captain and whenever there's an incident, like we've been seeing a recent uptick in vehicle burglaries. And so what we do is when we get that messaging, we try to convey that to Neighborhood Watch so that Neighborhood Watch can give a quick update to residents to be vigilant. So we're trying to fine-tune that communication tree.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? A public comment? None? Any deliberation, last statements? Can I get a motion to, actually Mayor Bradley, do you have anything?
I was just going to say, I'm just still concerned with the cost increases for the L A County Sheriff with the capitation of service and then the liability trust fund continuing to grow well outside of the rate of inflation.
Yeah, I agree with that.
I mean, maybe this fiscal year, as this is upon us, we can't change that now, but I think that should be a project for next year. Is to understand the auditor's formula and maybe challenge it or find a way to constructively engage on it.
Well, Councilman Lewis, I do know that other cities have sued the L A County Sheriff's Department in the past, claiming that they were not adequately, the proportion of costs and the amount of service was not equal to what they were being paid. I don't, I'm not advocating for doing that, but I do know that there's a lot of assumptions in the cost per hour for our, our full-time deputies and the, the costs on how those are allocated to the contract cities versus the L A County or regional areas. We just need to continue to push on that.
Yeah, I, I share your view that litigation would be a difficult road, but maybe there's a way to constructively engage on it. So if we take some, some time over the summer into the fall, we can begin that process.
Yeah, let's figure that out. Okay.
Say something real quick, really quick. So just so we know about contract minutes is you guys, staff has access to a dashboard, which you, you can see the minutes and where the minutes are going on a daily basis. So I, I know you talk about, you know, lawsuits and everything, but we're very transparent in our minutes. So I, I don't know if Jen, you, you have access to that, but you have access to the dashboard and we're very transparent with our minutes. So we're, we're not in any way not giving the minutes that we're supposed to be giving.
Yeah, Kevin Grow, I wasn't, I wasn't concerned about the actual minutes. I was caught concerned with the cost per minute. So I, I didn't know you were there. Sorry, I can't see you. So.
That's okay, sir. And also just one thing about the liability trust fund, sorry, Ara, but I know it's a, it's a high amount and it's, it's actually what could happen. And I'm not saying that it is, and we've done, Luminous has done a great job with not having, and mostly what it is, is the traffic accidents that the deputies are experiencing out there with civilians that are actually costing the cities a lot of money. And we haven't seen that here in Luminous, but that liability trust, trust fund is there for, if it does happen. And it can be lowered. I do know that for a fact. But again, I'd, I'd have to go in-depth and find out about, I think Ara, when I first met you, we, we had this discussion about the liability trust fund. So we can revisit it.
Thank you, Kevin Grow. Appreciate that. I know I've, I've seen the minute breakdown and, you know, we don't have any issues. And I think the, the biggest thing for us is the cost more than anything else because of the city and what the city's going through. So we just, you know, when we're expecting a nine and a half and it goes to thirteen percent, it's a big jump. And especially for a small-sized city like ours, it's tough to swallow, you know. So, you know, if we can adjust that and still have liability coverage, that'd be great. Okay. With that being said, can I have a motion to recommend staff?
Move, move to authorize the city manager to sign the, the authorization and we'll receive and file a report.
Can I get a second? Thank you. Roll call.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferraro?
Yes.
Councilmember Perristam?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Seo?
Yes.
Mayor Bradley?
Yes.
Motion passes. With that, we can move to our future agenda items.
Anyone have any future agenda items? Anyone? Mr. Mayor?
No, not at this time.
Thank you. I don't either. We can move on.
Can move to our city council oral reports?
Oral reports? Anyone? Councilmember Perristam?
Very quickly, attended two items in the last couple of weeks. One was a luncheon for Los Dosens luncheon.
Los Arenas.
Thank you, Mayor. I always have trouble with that, so I do appreciate that. I was not familiar with Moroccan food, but now I'm a big fan. It was a, it was a wonderful luncheon and I recommend Moroccan food now. The second item was attended the Chamber of Commerce Peninsula Fair with, with Mayor Protem last Saturday, and that's always a good time we've had by all. It was a wonderful day. We can, really, it's really good weather and a lot of funs. And we're, we're going to evaluate, both going to evaluate the, what was the, the meal we were going to evaluate? Our favorite?
The, the meal?
Yeah, the, the item that was our favorite meal and we said the same thing.
Oh, funnel cake.
Funnel cake, yes. We were evaluating the funnel cake and on the Fourth of July, we're going to report back with our findings.
Yeah, so Dave is going to be eating funnel cake instead of pie.
So did, did you have the funnel cake before you went on the zipper or after you went on the zipper? And, and did you both ride the zipper together?
No, definitely not. I want to throw up.
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Uh, yeah, a couple of things. I also attended the yearly celebration for the Docents of Los Arenas, which is a really fun event every year. The last event that Emily is, was overseeing as she transitions to a new position. So that was kind of bittersweet, but we're taking her on to bigger and better things. I had the opportunity to go to a Wayfarers Chapel donor reception as well and speak to some of the folks about the, the vision of the city in partnering with getting Wayfarers Chapel rebuilt, hopefully on the Battery Barn site as we continue to work with the U S Coast Guard to get that turned over. Those were the major things. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ferraro, anything? No, yeah. And the, everyone covered our event, so thank you very much. With that being said, I'll adjourn the meeting at eight forty-seven. Thank you, everyone.
Wait, wait, wait a second. You know, I don't want you taking credit for getting done with a council meeting before nine P M. Just because I'm not in the room.
It, it, it happens all the time, Dave.
Thank you all.
Have a good trip.
Thank you. Driving back tomorrow.
Bye.